Good evening, the hour being after six forty-five, I'd like to call the May twenty-fifth, twenty-two-three School Committee Meeting to Order. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the next order of business is a recognition.
Yes, we have Grace Ryan here. She is our graduate, one of our graduating School Committee Representatives, and we appreciate your commitment to providing all of us, school committee, school department, and the community with all these updates from the high school student body. So tonight, we are going to recognize Grace, wish her well in the future, and why don't you tell them where you're going to be?
I'm going to Saint Joseph's University and studying biology.
Nice, and I think we have a couple of things.
We do, we can, we have a book for you, which we'll pass down. Everybody wanted to just sign it, and we also have a certificate.
Thank you.
So thank you so much, we really appreciate again all of your contributions as a student and as a reporter.
Thank you.
We wish you all the best.
Thanks.
We see the big smile because you've already had your last day, right?
Grace, four years, right? You've done it all four years, right?
Three years.
Nancy?
Can I just add, I think you've been such an asset in so many ways, Grace. I mean, the fact that you're here is awesome, but you've jumped in academically, you've jumped into the sports world, and you make us really proud.
Thank you.
So, thank you, and please try to stay in touch. We love to hear how people do going forward, but you're on the right track to really great things, so thank you for everything.
And so then your spotlight is the next order of business.
Good evening, my name is Grace and I'm a senior. The school year is officially finishing up. Progress reports were issued on May sixteenth, and many classes are beginning their final units of the year. Last Tuesday at the NHS induction, senior NHS members celebrated their special educators, and junior NHS members were inducted. The highly anticipated prom for juniors and seniors is tomorrow night. Additionally, seniors are wrapping up their high school careers. Seniors' last day was on Tuesday, May twenty-third, and they spent the first half of their day walking through their elementary schools. Senior finals began yesterday and will continue through May thirtieth. Also, senior yard signs have been distributed to all seniors. Many senior events are planned in the coming days as we approach graduation on June fourth. Senior dinner will be next Wednesday. Graduation rehearsals will be in the morning of next Thursday and Friday, and following the graduation rehearsal next Thursday, seniors will participate in a field day. Spring sports, regular seasons are coming to an end, and the playoff brackets will come out in the next few days. This week, girls lacrosse, boys lacrosse, and softball were all ranked in the top ten for power rankings. Additionally, boys tennis is ranked fourteenth, and baseball is ranked sixteenth. The track and field regular season has finished up, and several athletes will compete at divisionals tonight and on Saturday. Good luck to all teams as they prepare for playoffs. As always, clubs are busy at the high school. The music department hosted a pops night last Friday. Last week was the Film Festival's red carpet show. Congratulations to all those who worked on a film. And in the coming weeks will be the Drama Club's spring cabaret. Lastly, the Student Council is currently electing their executive board for next year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Grace. Any questions or comments? Sean?
Just want to say congratulations and good luck. Born and raised Philadelphian, Saint Joseph's area, and had a bunch of good friends that passed through, so if you ever do need a friend at any point, let me know, and I can connect you with somebody.
And good luck this weekend, too.
Thank you.
Congratulations, nice report, as usual.
Thank you. I would say we usually say, you know, we excuse you to go and do work, and we know you don't have any, but.
You know there's a lot of senior activity coming up, so we do know there's a lot going on, Grace.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. All right, the next order of business is an out-of-state field trip request.
Yes, so present tonight is Mr. Giblin to request an out-of-state field trip for the boys and girls cross-country teams to the Ocean State Invitational, and that's in Warwick, Rhode Island.
Hey, oh, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Yeah, we'd like to bring the boys and girls cross-country teams to out-of-state meet. We've done it before. The boys team has gone maybe four or five times. The girls team went for the first time in a decade last year. It was a worthwhile experience for our athletes and a good opportunity to spotlight their talents in a multi-state meet.
Carrie?
Thank you for being still on the ball about the thirty days notice that you came in front of us in May.
Well, it wouldn't have been thirty days if I came back.
Right. So I will make a motion to approve the out-of-state field trip request for the high school cross-country teams to attend the Ocean State Invitational on September twenty-third, twenty-twenty.
Second.
We have a motion by Carrie, second by Mark. All those in favor, those who are staying, passes six-zero-zero.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
You're welcome to stay.
I love you.
Appreciate. All right, and the next order of business is an update from the District Nurse Leader.
Yes, so Linda Anderson, our new District Nurse Leader, so she's ending her first year with us. She's going to provide some information regarding school nurse offices and project and community collaborations. I'll turn it over to Linda, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. For those of you I have not met, as Bridget had said, I'm Linda Anderson, the new Nurse Leader. This has certainly been an interesting year as we transition out post-pandemic. I've been fortunate enough to have Kathy Garvin as my mentor all year, kind of giving me some insight as to how things were pre-pandemic and helping me kind of navigate this post-pandemic school year. I do have a presentation. I think we're getting there?
There you go.
Okay, am I going to be looking over here?
Yep.
Okay.
He's going to fix it.
So I know traditionally Kathy Garvin had given you a lot of statistics about how many students we see, how many kids in the district have different conditions, and I'm going to give you a few statistics, but I'm really not going to harp on that. I have a lot of awesome things the nurses are doing this year, and I thought I'd really share some of that stuff with you, especially where we've had a lot of, you know, talk about pandemic with the nurses, and I think we just need a different focus. So I'd like to start with some of these statistics because I do think that they're important. Those are not my statistics.
All right.
Okay, I got it. So I am going, again, I am going to start with some statistics because I do think it's important just to note. I did start with the two thousand eighteen-nineteen school year because I think it's a little bit more comparable than the last two years given the pandemic. So in two thousand eighteen-nineteen, we had about three thousand four hundred ninety-eight students, and at that time for the entire school year, we saw about twenty-four thousand seven hundred and ninety-one students throughout the entire district. And as you can see, I know it's a little small, but that's not including any of the everyday treatments, the medication, or the screenings. So fast forward to this year, we're not obviously done with the year yet, but so far we have about twenty-one thousand seven hundred and twenty-five visits, and we have approximately four hundred and fifty less students. So we are definitely, if not more than, you know, seeing more kids than pre-pandemic. They definitely missed us, for sure. So besides, you know, the amount of kids we see, obviously we see a lot of kids. We know the nurses have been really busy in the past couple of years with the pandemic. This year alone, we've called nine-one-one about fifteen times. Three of those times have been for EpiPen administration, and all of those were for kids who, and actually staff, who have never had an allergy before. So one of the things I wanted to bring up to you is that this year the nurses and I have been working on a new updating, the new Health Services website. If you go onto the Walpole Public Schools' website, you can find the link under School Health Services, and this will bring you to the main page, which I have a picture of my lovely nurses in the pandemic. So on the main page, you'll see information about policies, procedures, the new medication forms, updates, and any community resources. So we really wanted to focus this year on consistency throughout the district with all of the schools. So we had all of the information on the main page, but we do realize it's important for the nurses to have their own page because I know a lot of the parents will go to their pages on their school. So one of the things that I added was a picture of all of the nurses with their very tiny credentials underneath it, but when you click on the picture of the nurse, it actually brings you to their school site. You'll notice a lot of similarities with the site. I had each of the nurses write their own biography. Nurses by nature are very humble, and they didn't want to do this. So I actually had each of them pair with a different nurse and have another nurse write their biographies.
That's great.
So they're really impressive. I really wanted the community to read all the different things about them. Their credentials are extremely impressive. All the different organizations that they're a part of are on there, too. Some of them had added their Twitter feed. I really encouraged a lot of them to add pictures. They were reluctant to add pictures, but I've been adding them throughout the year of the different things that they're doing, their screening, their working with kids, and just getting out there in the classroom and teaching. So you can take a look at that and just get some, you know, insight into each of their individual schools. One thing that is the same on all of the pages, and it was my goal, was to have a link for the medication, all the protocols, to link back to the main page. Everyone has their own individual pictures as far as like what their picture is for the medication policy, but all of them will link back to the main site, and that will make it easier if anything changes. I will just change everything on the main site, and then everything will change on their site. So it's, for them, that part of the site is just kind of set it and forget it, but it will be a website that we'll be adding stuff to all year, depending on what they have going on or anything else that we think that parents might want to see on the sites. So these are just the Fisher Health Office, this is Boydin, this is the OPR, Elm Street Health Office. So you'll see they're all a little bit different, but again, the same theme where they have the same information linking back. So this is Byrd Middle School, JMS, and this is Walpole High School. So besides the website, which obviously has been a big undertaking, it's actually been a lot of fun to work with the nurses and kind of make that. We've also been focusing on emergency preparedness in our health office this year. A couple of the things that we've added, as you'll see on the right, I got all the nurses' brand-new emergency bags, which these emergency bags are big enough to have a lot more emergency supplies. So one of the things that we added this year was Stop the Bleed equipment. If you look on the left, in the nurses' bags, you'll see that there's the chest seal vent, there is the Israeli bandage, there's a tourniquet, and then some Stop the Bleed powder, which would go into a wound. You'll also see the red package there. That is a traditional Stop the Bleed kit for like the layperson. We are hoping by next year to have one of those kits in each of the AED cases in the front hallway of each of the schools, so anyone would be able to access that. This year, we were able to have first aid and CPR in person for the first time in a long time, which was great. So this is just for fun to see the nurses in action. One of the things that Kim Bida, the Elm Street Nurse, and I did this year, is we both went to a course, Best Strategies for Success, during school medical emergencies. So what we're going to do with that is she and I are going to collaborate next year, and we are going to create a curriculum for the already existing crisis teams in the school, and we're going to add a medical component of that. And we're going to go in together, and we're going to train them on CPR, first aid, and Stop the Bleed. And we'd also eventually like to have another emergency, like a big emergency bag in all the front offices with equipment that our emergency team would be trained to use. So outside of the nursing office, these are different things that our nurses are doing outside of their traditional roles. I know last year you had approved the puberty curriculum for the elementary school nurses, which was gender-inclusive. I had the opportunity to observe Nurse Shannon Granata with this lesson, and I will tell you, it was incredible to watch. It was definitely very unique. She has actually been the primary nurse going around to all of the schools and teaching this content, and it's mostly because the way that she delivers it, it's, you know, everybody, you know, she has a captive audience every time. And this is not easy information to deliver to fifth graders, but she had their attention the entire time. And I know that Dave Wall had explained the program, but one of the things from the back of the room that I really liked was that the kids were really interactive with it. They had their Chromebooks, and she would talk to them about it, and they were really asking questions, and they were answering. And at first, it was interesting. They were all kind of hovering around and blocking their answers, but by the end, they didn't care that the person next to them, whether it be a male or female, had seen what they were asking or answering. So it was pretty cool. Another program that the Walpole High School nurses are offering, it's a nicotine cessation program. They offer this after school. They offer this to students who have come forward and said that they have a problem and they're looking for help, or it's an alternative to disciplinary measures, and that's at the discretion of the administration. But this program is a program through Mass General Hospital, and they use this I decide program to deliver the curriculum. And this program has also been well-received by the students, and they'll continue to do it as long as the kids are wanting to go. So here we have Trish Fisher. The nurses have been working with Trish Fisher for years, doing the vaccine clinics all throughout the town, but one thing that's unique, it was actually unique last year because of the pandemic, there was a need. Trish Fisher got licensed to deliver vaccines in the schools. That's why we saw the vaccine clinics where we were giving out the COVID vaccines in the schools. So that was hugely successful. So what we decided to do, since we're able to give all vaccines in the clinic, is we decided to utilize her to come into the schools this year. If we have a school that has a lot of students who are missing vaccines, for example, the Minactra vaccine, a lot of kids are needing to get caught up because of the pandemic. So she's working directly with the school nurses to see what their need is for vaccines, and if they have a lot, instead of sending the parents to the physician or to her clinics after school, she's actually getting parent permission and going right into the nursing office and calling the kids down and able to vaccinate them. And that's great, not only to catch up our kids who typically go to the physician, but a lot of our students who are coming from out of country, who sometimes their lack of vaccine record holds them up from coming into school, we can get them on a catch-up schedule immediately, and they're able to start as soon as they get here. So that has been really awesome, and I'm excited to see kind of how this evolves in the next couple of years. Another thing that Trish Fisher, Trish Fisher and I have been collaborating a lot this year, and last summer, we were asked to be mental health first aid instructors, and that was funded by the Medical Reserve Corps. So this was actually our first class that she and I had done together, and it was just about a month ago. So we did it with the Medical Reserve Corps, and it was very successful. We had great feedback. A lot of people really liked it. So she and I are going to pilot a couple more classes this summer, and then we're going to open it up to the public. So you'll see that coming on the public health webpage. She'll be sending out flyers and offering this course for people in the community to become mental health first daters. So that is all I have for updates for what we're doing for now. Does anyone have any questions?
Sean?
I have a comment. This is amazing stuff. I mean, to the best of my knowledge, this is in response to incidents that have happened. This is you guys taking leadership and creating a safer environment for our students. It's awesome to see. I feel so good as a parent to know that they'll be safe and cared for in case of emergency, really, no matter where they are, whichever school. And it's great to see everybody collaborating with one another. So good.
Nancy?
Thanks very much. It is, it's powerful stuff that you're doing, and interesting. I'm particularly interested in the first aid, the AED training, but especially the mental health first aid class. Do you see that as a potential that could be offered to some of the kids at the high school? Because if you want to be a lifeguard, you need to have the first aid and the AED training. And my daughter, first year of college, took the mental health first aid training, and she said she thought it was one of the most powerful things that she learned. So yeah, just a thought.
Oh, that's great. No, I didn't even think of that. That's actually, that's great. So the particular course that we're trained in is adult mental health first aid, but that would absolutely be relevant. I'll talk to Trish Fisher. I know that she's open for anything, so I think that would be great.
Yeah, just because I think, I think there are roles for adults in all of this. But I think sometimes when it comes to mental health, kids go and listen to their friends first.
Absolutely.
When there's a crisis brewing. So.
Sure.
You know, it was just something that was done on her college campus, and she said it was one of the best trainings she's ever been to.
Excellent, thank you. No, that's definitely good to know.
Thanks.
I want to sort of echo what Sean said. I think it's, you started by saying you're not going to share a whole lot of data, and I think Kathy shared lots and lots of data, and it was mostly COVID-related. So it's great to see, like everything this year, new innovative things that we haven't been able to do for a while because of COVID. So congratulations on all the programs that you added. I think it's fantastic.
Thank you.
Great, thank you so much.
All right, well, thank you for inviting me.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Good job. To be next order of business is an update on the work-study program.
Yes, this is exciting. So we have Mr. Conley, James Conley, tonight to talk about the Walpole High School work-study program, and I'm not going to read all this because I'm going to let him do his thing, so I don't steal his thunder with the students.
Hello, I'm James Conley. For those who don't know me, this is Aiden Feeney, our spokesperson and current student in the work-study program. Although I shouldn't say current, he actually had his final presentation yesterday, so he's officially done. Aiden, thank you.
Congratulations.
So I was here last May, and I was celebrating the twentieth Film Festival anniversary, and I'm here to celebrate the first work-study anniversary, so thanks for having me back. I wasn't sure exactly what we were looking for, so I kind of threw a lot of things together. I figured some people might not understand what the work-study is, so I'll do a brief overview of that. I'll go into like what the work-study class does, what the internship side looks like, and what our vision is moving forward. So there's just a quick synopsis of the next ten minutes of this meeting. So our program, we have realized that the traditional classroom setting isn't for every student. I don't think that's a brand-new idea. I think that's something that we've known for a long time. This is something that districts around us have already been addressing for the last, I'd say, decade or so, and we're implementing our program now, and we're happy to be part of it because it's really taking off, and I'll get to that in a sec. But our program looks to gain career readiness skills specifically for kids that have an idea of where they want to go. So Aiden here, I'll keep referring to him, and he'll give his spiel in a sec. But Aiden, he wants to be a plumber, and inside the walls of Walpole High School, unless there's some emergency that Dave Wood needs help with, he's not going to get that hands-on training. So our vision was, what's a way that we can cater to those students that, you know, don't necessarily fit the traditional mold of high school? Now, Aiden definitely could have stayed in the regular classroom, done four years, been fine. He would have been fine. He would have had all As and Bs, but that's not, that's not really helping him with his career and future vision. So we set up the work-study program, which gets him into the field, gets him hands-on, and gets him access to, you know, the skills that he will be using moving forward. And we'll get to a lot of those, and I'm going to kind of breeze over this. So the way the work-study program is different, and this is a kind of a big, this is kind of the big shock, the sticker shock of this program, is how the schedule is affected for our seniors. So the first half of the year, we condense their core academics, so their math, their English, into that first half of the year so that we can set them up for the second half of the year. Starting January, all of semester two, our students are out in the field with, you know, business partners, local business partners, getting that hands-on experience. And that is, that's only possible because of the way we schedule. We have some teachers that are willing to kind of bend their contract rules, I guess, to fit this in, and we have a lot of teachers behind this program that are huge supporters, as well as, you know, everyone at this table. I did meet with maybe half of you in January, I want to say, so you've probably heard this before, but there is a lot of support, and we're thankful for that. But again, the first half of the year, our students are, you know, kind of regular schedule, with the exception of those condensed classes. So it's a little bit, you know, you're doing two hours of English instead of one throughout the day, and you're doing math in a hybrid model. So it's a little different than your typical school day, but it gets all your academics across and completed and meeting all the state standards and everything by January. So that come, you know, start of semester two in January, you can go out and, you know, kind of get a head start, you know, four- or five-month head start on your career. And noted on the bottom there, I will say, we did have some hockey players, some lacrosse players. You know, the schedule doesn't, it's not like, all right, see ya. We just got, you know, a handful of kids out the door, we'll never see you again, bye, see you at graduation. No, they're still part of the school. The students come back, participate. Aiden's going to prom tomorrow. He sent me a picture of his tux. He said he was wearing it tonight, so I was kind of thankful he didn't show up in it, but it kind of would have been nice if he did, too. But they are, you know, you're still, you're still a student. You're still part of the student body. You're maybe just not bumping into your friends in the hallway, and you're learning those skills that are helping you moving forward. So we do have a class that also meets in that first half of the year. Our class goes over career readiness skills, kind of general workplace skills, how to interview, writing a resume, how to quit properly, how to look for jobs properly. You know, it's kind of those skills that, why aren't we teaching these students? But, you know, that's something that we're trying to address, you know. On the job, what's appropriate? How to send an email. I know some people in this room have been teachers as well, and some of the emails we get sent are definitely, like, where is this coming from? We need to, like, you know, act professional. So it's teaching young students how to be professionals because in five months, they're going to be professionals. So that's kind of the aim of the class. And so that also is a class they take in the first half of the year, that first semester that leads up to their second semester, which is the internship. The internship, it's a full-time job. So Aiden here, he would work, he'd get to work at quarter to six every morning, and he'd work till two, Monday through Friday. So Aiden here, he would work, uh, he'd get to work at quarter of six every morning and he'd work till two, Monday through Friday. Um, with the exception of once a month, they would come back to the school and we'd have like a, a check-in with me. Uh, we'd, you know, kind of reflect on everything that we've done in the last month. We'd talk about what's working, what's not working, how to improve on certain situations. And I, I found that really beneficial. I don't want to speak for you, but I think the kids also found it beneficial to see that, you know, another kid in the program, but in an electrical company was having a similar experience. It was all positive too, so. So yeah, the internship is honestly, we've had, uh, we have physical therapists, we have plumbers, electricians, uh, property management. We have a student that, um, he did EMT certification courses. So he'll be taking his EMT certification class in, uh, on June 2nd. So the, you know, a couple of days before graduation, so hopefully he graduates as a certified EMT. He passed his, his class with an 89. Shout out Ryan Fokes. But he, uh, yeah, so it's, that's like, we got creative with it. We have a student in a recording studio. That's something that he, that's his vision, that's his passion. He didn't really know a ton about it, uh, but he since has learned. And I've seen tremendous growth in just, you know, four or five months in, in this student in particular. Just, you know, how to act professional, how to, how to be a professional. So again, it's not just, I mean, for, for a student like Aiden who, I want to be a plumber. He really just dug, dug in and really took advantage of the situation. And that's why he's here with me. But for some of our other students who aren't necessarily sure, or, you know, I, what I want to do is not in school. It's not a trade. It's, we have a spot for everyone. So that's what I like about this. Um, here's just a couple of shots from some of our students. You can see Aiden in a few of these. We actually have two students that are at the, at the placement that Aiden is at. Top right, we have our, our EMT student doing some hands-on learning. That was a fun day to observe. It was like an emergency room training. It was actually kind of terrifying. Some cabinet making, again, the studio, physical therapy up there. Um, and again, this is connecting our students just directly to job sites, directly to local businesses. So it's really, you know, we have to thank those businesses for taking our students in as much as the students for engaging as, as much as they did. A question that a lot of people bring up is like, oh, is this like, is this just, it's this or graduating, or this or college? You know, this program, we made sure we've catered it to meet all of our graduation requirements. We've catered it so that any student going through the program is still eligible to go to college. Even if it's maybe not right now, I know Aiden has planned right now. He's still on the fence, actually. He might be going next year. He might not be. But we have that option open. If five years down the road, you say, hey, you know what, I think I might, I might want to go to college. Again, this program, we're not, we're, we're catering it so that, you know, it's, we're still meeting all of the, the high standards that we hold in Walpole Public Schools. But we are also trying to give kids that outside-of-school experience while having a safety net in school. In the very first slide, I said there is a application process, so we do, you know, we kind of can, if a student's not gonna meet these standards, we won't accept them to the program, which, you know, we don't just let anyone in. But this is a program that is meant to kind of cater towards maybe dropout prevention. Um, you know, those students at risk, um, as well as students that aren't traditional learners. They're more kinesthetic, you know, hands-on. Kind of jumping all around, but thanks for following me. Um, these are just colleges that I've spoken to this year. I've spoken to the people that read the applications, um, for these colleges. And I've said, here's our program. I've laid it out. How do you see that impacting, like, a student's acceptance to yours? All of those said they don't see an impact. Some of them said they actually see it as a positive, that it's, it's beneficial. They could see like getting that experience in the field that they're trying to study as, as a beneficial experience for them. But they're like, as long as it's noted and we don't just see this, what is this internship second half? As long as we, we write down what it is, um, they don't see any, any problem. And as you can see, those are schools that kind of range in, um, like academic abilities, I guess. I mean, there's some schools that are state schools and then there's some that are, you know, pretty, like, I see WPI. That's the first one that catches my eye. That's, that's a heavy-duty school to get into, so. You know, it's just a couple notes there. Special education, how does that get affected by the work-study program? Um, for any students that are on IEPs, um, we have, we have, we have to amend the IEP, obviously. If, you know, say you have a reading disability, obviously, if you're out plumbing or something, you're not going to be, being taught how to read in between tightening a pipe. So we have to amend the IEP, but we do have it reflect that you do get the services when you do come in for that once-a-month meeting. So right now, a cycle at the high school is eight days. And we would rewrite that or amend it. I shouldn't say rewrite, but amend IEP to reflect that those services are now once a month. So instead of two or three services a month, you're getting one. Because the services are obviously still important, but we do think focusing on that, that transition goal, especially in your last four or five months of school, um, it is beneficial. So we don't want to limit this to just, you know, students who we don't have to amend anything for. You know, we try to be as inclusive as possible. Every, every work site supervisor does get a learning profile of the students, whether they're on an IEP or not. So we do have, um, you know, that communication as well. If there are difficulties, the supervisors know how to work with, um, the students with their learning difficulties. So, looking ahead, I have a couple of slides about just like my vision for the program. As far as the class goes, um, one thing I would love to do is add OSHA certification, um, to the class. I think that would be a, something that the students can take away, um, like a physical certificate. They can take away with them to any job site. So that, that is something that I would love to add to the class moving forward. This website in particular, it's relatively cheap and it kind of expands OSHA for a ton of different categories. So that is something, moving forward, I would, I would aim to add to my curriculum. With that career readiness and stuff, this would just kind of be, uh, scooted right in there too. Um, we also have a vision, uh, for a program called Innovation Pathways. I'm not sure if, um, school committees familiar with Innovation Pathways, but it's a state-run program. A lot of schools are hopping in on this. It's career education learning, so it's exactly what this program is. Um, it's maybe a little bit on a bigger scale. Um, let me just pull up the next slide, actually. So in the school, um, it's, so for, I mean, the work-study program, I'm thinking is one piece of this innovation pathway. But it's also getting students connected to careers in fields, even if they're not in the program. So I've been doing that as well. So I do have my students in the program, but, uh, I do work with students that aren't in the program, finding job shadowings, uh, internships, stuff like that. So this, again, this is a few years down the road, but I just want to plant the seed now. So you guys are gonna be like, what is this? We're in the process of applying for, um, a grant that would help plan this. So, um, so that is, that's due on June 15th. So we're looking forward to, uh, kind of exploring what we can do. Because one thing that Walpole High has that many schools around us don't is a huge program of studies. Like, we've, we've looked at, like, our NEASC report, our, when we first met with our, these Innovation Pathways people, they're like, you offer just such a wide variety of classes. And so how do we take advantage of that and how do we, you know, connect those students of, like, in the fields that they're interested in to fields, um, you know, career fields? And that's, again, the whole goal of the program. I think work-study is a huge piece of it, but, um, there is vision for, you know, the more traditional student as well. So I'll get to Aiden in a sec. Uh, this year, we had seven students, so we wanted to keep it under 10. Mr. Embush, Principal Embush was, he was like, I'd be happy with five. We ended up right in the middle with seven, um, so that's great. Because we wanted to make sure it went off. Um, and we talked about this in January. We wanted to make sure that the program was successful. And so we just had our deadline for current juniors for next year's work-study. We had 28 applicants, so that's four times, um, which is great. So we're actually gonna probably have to say no to a few, but we might have to get creative with, like what I was saying. How do we, this might not fit the mold of work-study per se, but how do we help you with your career? We just don't want to be like, nope, see ya, bye. We want to help these students, you know, moving forward. But I do have Aiden here. Um, again, he, he is a huge piece. Uh, he, he, uh, would speak to students that were like, I plan on doing this. And he's like, we have the work-study program. Come on down. So he, he actually corralled a few of our students. I would say he's our face of the program in our first year especially. So I just want, I wanted him to kind of explain his experience, uh, with the program. So, Aiden?
How are you guys? My name's Aiden Feeney, um, senior at Walpole High School. Uh, I did plumbing with EM Duggan. It's a local, uh, Local 12 company. It's union. They're based out of Kent, Massachusetts. Um, they're one of the biggest union companies right now in the state. They have fire protection, uh, HVAC, mechanical, pipe fitting and plumbing. It's been a great experience. Um, I learned a lot, not only just in the trade, but also the business side. Because, uh, all of our bosses work like right beside along us. So all the meetings, you know, it's like, um, you can just stick around and hear what they have to say. It's been a great experience, even on the school side of things, the way it was ran. Mr. Connolly did a great job with, along with Ms. Ty. She did our English teacher. So at the very beginning, um, we got our schedule. Oh. We got our, uh, schedule, actually on the first day of school. I had to meet with my guidance counselor, Ms. Noiz. Um, so we had a double English. I had no math because I got all my credits done, which was great. So I got to do an extra fun class, like forensics, which was awesome. I took a, um, economics class and gym. So I was a little nervous about having double English at first because it's two hours of English, back-to-back. Sounds terrible.
Tell us what you really think.
But, uh, I gotta say, Mr. Connolly and Ms. Ty did a great job. The first block was like stuff we really had to do, like really had to do to graduate. But the second block was things that we wanted to work on ourselves. So at the time, the World Cup was going on. I'm a big soccer fan, so I got to write all about the World Cup. It was great. It kept me engaged completely. I did way better than I did any of the year because I liked what I was learning. You know what I mean? And you're way more engaged when you do that. So they definitely catered to all of us. Um, I'm on a 504 plan, not an IEP, but even in the, uh, work-study English, I was still able to get, um, you know, an extra test room, extra time, whatever I needed. So everything was still taken into consideration from last year, so nothing really changed. The biggest thing though was probably just, just double English, like, but everything else was the exact same, so that was great. You know, I got to play football. We had a great year. I get to come in still once a month. I see my buddies, all the teachers. That's always fun. The first day of our, uh, actual work-study program, I know, it got there. I was really nervous, but I believe he had talked to our boss before, so he got to really integrate us and, you know, introduce us to everybody that was working there. Uh, it's just been great. Um, I've met a lot of good people to help me, uh, get into the union for Local 12. There's actually a guy from Walpole. His name's, uh, he's Mike Gorman. His kid's at Walpole High, so that was a good connection off the bat. Uh, he's really been helpful for all of us. Um, it's good to have a kid from the school with you as well. You know, to go alongside with some chemistry, I guess, you know what I mean, to help me get through it. The first thing I do every morning is get up, you know, 4:45, 5 o'clock. Get to work around 5:45. Um, something unique about our company is we do stretch and flex in the morning. Stretch out for like five minutes because, you know, we're lifting pipes all day. People are gonna be sore. So that's like a mandatory thing. Around the shop, we do a lot of maintenance because obviously not all of us are the biggest, like, plumbers yet, so we can't really touch everything. So in the meantime, while we're being taught, we also, um, just, you know, I've been doing a painting job around the whole entire shop. Our shop's 100,000 square feet. It's huge. I'm painting the entire, uh, foundation of the entire building right now. Um, I've gotten a bunch of certifications. I've gotten forklift certified, um, which is helpful because there's a lot of stack racks which we keep all of our inventory on. So it's been great to, you know, along while moving, but also finding what the inventory is, seeing what the jobs are like. Because each, uh, stack rack is individualized to a piece of like, to a certain job. So, you know, for example, um, 4D Trinity, the other day I packed and, uh, sent out a $2,000 tub. It's going to one of the most expensive hotels in the city. It's really cool. Um, we actually get taken out to the job sites. I haven't gone yet, but that's one of the things we get to do after a little bit. Which is really cool because you get to see what you actually did in action, which is awesome. It's like, oh, I did that. You know what I mean? So that's been great. I've learned what like, what a union shop's all about. What they, like, what they stand for, obviously. I like, all the, um, all the things that stick out about like the union and the trades is true. You know, the, our work ethic, like the loyalty, discipline, you know. Obviously, you get drug tested. There's nobody's out there doing crazy stuff on weekends. It's true, but, um, it's been great to see though, like, uh, what it takes to, because it's, it's very competitive. You know, everybody wants to be in the union, that I know at least. And so, um, the people that are in there are in there for a reason. And, um, it's good to see like what a role model looks like for me to look up to as well. Because there's guys in there for like, you know, 20 years. And I get to see, you know, what it takes. If I don't get in this year, I'll still stay at the shop. But I'll get, you know, I'll get the extra experience. And so that's, that's been great.
That's excellent. Carrie?
Congratulations, Aiden.
Thank you very much.
On successfully completing the program. And I would say, if the plumbing thing doesn't work out, but I think Mr. Connolly will hire you to be his PR man. But I have a feeling the plumbing thing is going to work out because I can see how passionate you are when you talk about it. Do the two humans in the back of the room belong to you?
Yeah, those are my parents. Yeah.
So you're under no obligation, but I would certainly invite you, if you would like to come up and share from a parent's perspective, what it's, you know, your experience of watching your son go through the program. Please do, because there might be parents listening who are thinking about this as an option for their younger student and maybe they would like to hear. Yeah, come on up.
We didn't know about this meeting until 10 o'clock last night.
That's the way it goes.
Yeah, as a parent of sons, I almost find that hard to believe.
So even though he's in the summer program, still like a regular student. So forget to tell your parents until the night before.
And that's only because I asked him. I didn't even know. We're Aiden's parents. I'm Karen. This is PJ. Uh, Aiden is our youngest of three. He, uh, wasn't always, I don't know, fond of school. Didn't like this, the structure. He really struggled with that a lot, especially in the younger years. He did really well in the high school when he found out about this program. My husband is basically a, uh, heavy equipment operator. He always worked. Aiden always liked that. He says, I just want to work like dad. And when he found this program, it was a perfect fit. That's really, that is really it. And he's done really well with it.
And you can see a big change. He really loves it.
He's done extremely well at the high school. Complete turnaround. It's been really good for him.
Thank you for sharing that. Um, thank you very much. And then I, I have a question for you, Mr. Connolly.
Sure.
I hear you say that there are 28 students who are interested and I guess, hearing from the Feeney family, I want to say like, get them all in, right? And so some of that's obviously gonna depend on community partners, right?
Yeah.
And so what if there are community partners or local businesses who might want to be involved in this program? How would they go about, um, talking to somebody, to you or whoever at the high school?
Yeah, so we, I mean, for everyone listening, everyone at home, um, J. Connolly, C.O.N.N.O.L.L.Y., walpole.k12.ma.us, very long sub or a post title, whatever. But please reach out, um, because we're, we're looking for, like, this year, we have plumbing, electrical, like I said, a recording studio, uh, physical therapy, EMT. Already looking at next year, there's aviation mechanics, there's the computer programming, there's just business, like, like finance. So we have kids already just in completely different pathways than, than what we're, like, we have other students that are, you know, in the ones that we've already made those connections. But still, we're always looking for, for partners. So if anyone out there knows someone or has a business, or knows a friend of a friend that's in a, a, a business that you think would be willing to take a high school intern, um, please do not hesitate to reach out. Because we're looking, even if it's not this year, there might be a student that we could do a job shadow with or, or, uh, or next year, down the road, um, just to make those connections. Yeah.
Anybody that like, yes, any parents are gonna watch this that are concerned about, um, you know, college isn't liking it. Obviously, he showed the schools, but at the beginning of the year, we're still pretty focused on playing college football. Um, and I had explained to all the coaches that I had talked to, you know, I'm in the work-study program, or I have gotten in, I'm gonna do it. And nobody had a problem with it. They actually encouraged it. They think it's a great thing because it shows you, you know, even more. And nobody had a problem with it. They actually encouraged it. They think it's a great thing because it shows you, you know, even more motivated. WPI is obviously a great one. All the schools are in here, like construction management, which was I was gonna look to do. Like they would love, they'd love to hear like, you know, a kid who's already got a head start six months. So it's just like one of the things I wanted to add in.
The last thing I want to say is it sounds like you really benefited from some great mentors, from your father to Mr. Connolly, to the people in the shop. And I just would, I don't think I have to tell you this, but I hope that you'll carry on that tradition when it's you twenty years from now, right? When there's somebody new starting out and learning.
I'll be sending a kid to.
But that's my goal, is to own my own plumbing company. And like I said, it's been great to see because I've seen the business side evolve it so far, and I'm retaining all of it. And I hope to practice it when I get older, and I'll always take on all the work study kids.
Congratulations again.
Thank you very much.
One thing to also mention. So we had seven students this year. Six of the seven were offered positions. So they have jobs now in that field. The one was the student taking the EMT course. So obviously, you can't get a job from a class, but hopefully that EMT certification will lead to a job on an ambulance. And then he wishes to get into a firehouse. So Chief Bailey, if you're listening.
So I was gonna say, I'm a high school teacher. There are a lot of responsible kids that don't like school, right? So this is kind of the perfect, this is kind of the perfect thing. So I encourage you to seek out as many of those kids as you can.
Yeah. And we've been trying to corral them in any way. And there's honestly a great network. There's so many teachers at the school, like school counselors, administration. There's so many people behind this program. So there's so much support that it's honestly just a funnel of students, oh, you should, you know, meet with this kid, this kid, this kid. So we do have a lot, a lot of support in that sense. And it's kind of like a farm system. They just send them my way. Talk to him about this. Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, Aiden, I think the fact that you're here tonight is a great advertisement because, you know, kids want to hear from other kids. And we don't have a huge listening audience, but you're on TV.
Let's go viral. Let's go viral.
You're picking up our game, okay? But overall, I do think that that is something that would mean something to other kids. But I also, as Mrs. Tenizio was saying, if there are employers out there that hear a little bit about it and hear somebody like you speaking so maturely, like it's just, I don't know you at all, but it seems to me like this has helped you mature into somebody who feels comfortable being the spokesperson. And I think that resonates in the community too. So thank you very much for being here.
Yeah, and I actually, talking about, there's a couple of Walpole alumnis that have their own companies in this town that I know will hire. I had actually been initially signed up with one of them, but I hadn't really wanted to get into the union, so I had left them. But, you know, and they actually, they are very willing to take on people in multiple different companies too. And there's actually one of those mechanical company, which is plumbing, HVAC, electrical. So a kid could get all three trades and figure out which one he likes, which is what I did. So it'd be great.
No, I think you're really helping the growth of this in a few different ways. So thank you for being here. And I also just want to thank Mr. Connolly because I think as a Walpole High grad, you make us proud. And whatever you do, you do well. So, you know, I think that you deserve, that you're not necessarily pigeonholing yourself in one box. And I think that that's a really important thing for kids to see, that you can have different interests and different talents. But thank you because I think that a lot of what's happening is because you've made it happen. So thanks.
I appreciate that. Another Walpole grad, my father, class of seventy, he sends me the school committee's report every month. And my dad, they email it to me. I hope he reads it because I, hi dad, shut up.
Love it. Love it. Love it.
Thank you all. Any questions? Good to see you again.
Good to see you. Long time no see. I think this is such a good presentation. We all want to jump in and speak to it. And especially Mr. Feeny, congratulations. We assumed it was your mom from the red hair on the back, but the look on her face when you were speaking was absolutely priceless. So we echo the pride they have in you and what you've done. I think it just, it speaks to the fact that there's a lot of pathways for folks. And the energy which you bring is phenomenal. The fact that this is the first year going and you jumped right in is phenomenal. The fact that you're getting up at four in the morning and going to a job site at six AM when your fellow students are maybe getting up at seven and rolling into the high school. I think that's, it shows that you, in one sense, you know, put your shoulder in and leaned down and looked at a goal that you wanted to accomplish and really sought after that with grit and tenacity. And that's what we want from all of our students, no matter how they get there. But it's great, even in your most recent remarks, we talk about the future and other people who might want to be part of this program. I think that's just a great, different style, different way of showing leadership and being kind of the first one out of the gate in this. And so we wish you well. We know you're gonna do well from what we've seen tonight. And just congratulations again.
Thank you very much.
Just thank you, James and Aiden and mom and dad for your commitment. You know, this is something, I wish we could clone you, James, because this is the reason why. You know, this is something that, you know, we've been wanting to do for some time. And, you know, in two thousand nineteen, this is, Principal Bush, this has been like one of his, you know, passion. And, you know, two thousand nineteen, we thought, okay, we might, you know, get there and start it. And then, you know, it happened. And then now, you know, coming out of it, we've been able to do this. And, you know, I also want to thank the school committee for your support, for making this happen, because this was something we needed to get, you know, from our budget. And you supported that. And now that we have, you know, twenty-eight interested versus twelve, that's why we have to clone you because there's more job sites that, you know, you need to physically be able to get to. So I think as we grow this program, that's something budgetary that we need to, you know, keep in mind to continue to make this such a strong and successful program.
Did you, oh, sorry, Sean.
I was just gonna say, don't let all of us go to your head.
Spoken like a high school teacher.
Just wondering, you mentioned the budget. Is that the limiting factor on program expansion? Like, is the next step more staff? Are there more resources?
Yeah, and that's something that I think as you're having more, more students enter the program on job sites, depending on they're taking these English classes or math classes, and they have to take them at a certain time. But I think more so for James's position of being able to have these meetings, get to job sites. I mean, it's a lot of work.
Yeah, it's staffing and space are kind of the two. My room can hold, we had seven this year, could probably hold five comfortably.
We're not about comfort.
I need to stand up and walk anyways. But, yeah, Bailey Ty, she's the other teacher that's tethered to this program. She's the English teacher. And so like, that's that class in particular. It was a little crowded, but we got creative. We used other spaces in the school. And, you know, I think that with the number exponentially growing next year, I think it will be, I think next year will be a very good challenge, but I also think that this year was a great. I think we did it the correct way. You know, we got our feet wet with a manageable number. And now we're really trying to see how far we can push this moving forward.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the presentation. Aiden, thank you so much. Again, great spokesperson. And best of luck to you, whatever your path looks like. We know you'll be successful. Thank you.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
All right. The next order of business is the superintendent evaluation. So we, as a board, have compiled the evaluation for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. We will go through the evaluation at a high level of the regulatory requirements, best practice, set meaningful goals in your summit of ratings. So I thought I would just sort of go through the compilation of the evaluator comments is probably the best approach. I know yesterday, I believe it was, that the subcommittee spent time with you, Dr. Goff, to go through things in a little bit more detail. So in this body, I'll go through the top comments. So and I'm just gonna read them. Dr. Goff's goals are ambitious, more numerous than many of her colleagues, and seek to address a very large area of focus. We gave her an exemplary rating. And while exemplary sounds like a term for someone who's reached the top of their potential performance without a next level, we know Dr. Goff is always looking to improve. She's relentless and continues to move her own goalposts forward and encourages those high expectations to trickle down from leaderships to teachers and also to students. During the pandemic, Dr. Goff proved she's an adaptable and skillful manager who continued to remain true to the core educational mission. This year, we have seen the brilliance of her abilities in both educational and social emotional realms. We continue to hear in the news and from other districts that the emerging from the pandemic has been challenging for K to twelve education. Locally, we feel the story is very different. We benefit from a climate of professional respect and willingness to dialogue through difficult situations, including the recent contract negotiations last spring. Joy and appreciation has replaced anxiety, and people are committed to coming to work and working in Walpole. The school department interacts with the town administration in a very straightforward and effective way, leading to productive budget and school building conversations. There are real and difficult conversations that happen often, and people genuinely want what's best for all students. And we also have a data-driven approach to monitoring student progress, resulting in improvements across all subject areas, but especially in elementary math. That's an area of focus we've had this year. And we believe that all of this positive climate is due to Dr. Goff's leadership style that values pointed discussions, open-minded listening, reasoned evaluation of situations, and careful decision-making. As she transitions from being a new superintendent to one of the stronger chief executives in education in our area, she embodies the highest level of professionalism and ethics, and we remain very lucky to have her at the helm. So I don't know.
You know how much I love this, right?
Yeah, I know.
Don't let it go to your head.
So I thought it was best to sort of give that overview. I know you have the details. I don't know if anyone from the school committee has anything to add.
I would just add that I think, I think we're incredibly lucky. I think that it's, lucky's not the right word. We're incredibly fortunate because it's because of hard work. I think that the team is healthy when the leader is a good leader. And, you know, I think that this is a good place for kids. And I think that kids are recovering from the pandemic because of amazing people that work for us. And so it's team as well as leader that I think we should really make sure we appreciate because there's too much criticism in the world right now. And I think that this gives us a chance to be reflective. And, you know, I think we should be grateful. I think this also makes us think about next steps. And I, you know, we talked yesterday at the subcommittee about scheduling a goals workshop soon. Well, all this is fresh in our mind. But I just want to say, I think it's a great district because of the team that you have put together, Bridget. So thank you very much.
Yes, good, strong work carried out with the utmost professional integrity and a smile and joy as well. I think, I think we did have a really good, there's a lot we could say, right? But I know it is, these are good conversations, but just as far as the process, we had a really good and productive dialogue yesterday. And I think we talked about having maybe, as the next year goes on, whoever's on subcommittee doing that dialogue a little more because it's really productive. And I think we talked about sort of how these goals are really iterative and spooling the kind of collaborative effort that we as a body will make to drill down a little more on how we do this tool because it's an imperfect tool that doesn't really capture the whole thing. So I think that that conversation was just a really good one we had and something that was good to report in a very broad way out on. So I think there's good stuff. And I second the idea of having goals, a goal workshop probably before school ends in June. I think it would be really good to see kind of what the next set of goalposts are you gonna set for yourself. And I think that's gonna be a really productive and good discussion. And one that is sort of easy, I think. I think that's a blessing that we can have these really good conversations as well.
No, I just want to say thank you. I think, you know, the central office team is incredible. You know, along with also principals, administrators, you know, we really just, we push each other. And we don't always agree, but it causes us to process and reflect and get to a place because at the end of the day, we want to continue to move this district forward. And I also appreciate the school committee because I do think that, you know, we all continue to push each other as well. It's really beneficial. So I appreciate the support.
And we did talk about the need to take a little bit of a break in the summertime because when you do work this hard, it is important to take the time to refresh. So, you know, that's an important piece to. I'd make a motion to approve the superintendent's evaluation.
Second.
Motion by Nancy, second by Bill. All those in favor? opposed? passed is six zero zero. Thank you very much.
Can I ask you a quick question? Just not that related, but just more of the process related. So, you know, we get the packets that we fill out and we submit. But, you know, I'm not sure that the community is fully aware what your goals are and all of the work that you did to meet them. You know, we saw that. And then those that are on the subcommittee, it sounds like you get to discuss. I'm not privileged to anything that happens there. But I feel like that should be shared. I mean, we boiled it down into like seven minutes, which was good. But, you know, I feel like there's more tangible ways that maybe in the future, we can share that and celebrate that. And I think that starts at the start of the year where the goals are out there, where, you know, we can share on a slideshow or something, you know, what the goal is and, you know, what you anticipate. But then this time of year, you know, all of your steps, you've listed more evidence than I think I'm familiar with. And I don't want the community to miss out on some of that. I mean, we get to see some of it throughout the school committee meetings because each meeting really builds up the work that you do in pursuit of your goals. But just to see a direct connection, I don't know if that's something that, you know, we can work on in the future.
Yeah, we can talk about it as part of setting the goals. How do we, you know, are there ways, different ways to, when things are reported, note that it's a specific goal perhaps? All right. Next order of business is your report.
Yes, this one's short and sweet tonight. Just a reminder, summer learning program that's gonna close on Saturday. And the principals will have those out in their e-notes. In terms of, it just came right before this. I was at Patriot Place, and they had a Walpole Pops Orchestra, which was good. It's an extracurricular orchestra, middle school and high school. And so they were performing right at Patriot Place. And that was really nice to see. So it's a little windy, no stands, you know, stands and music. But it was really, it was a job well done. I'm sure I speak for Dr. Hahn. It was a pleasure attending the Walpole High School National Honor Society next week. I think it's one of our favorite events of the year, just really seeing our seniors recognize educators and coaches who have meant the world to them. And I always love when sometimes they recognize the elementary teachers who they remember before they graduate. And I love to see the changing of the guard, so to speak, when the junior class is recognized and to the National Honor Society are inducted. I want to thank, I think, Kristin and Bill attending. I think you worked Pops Night on Friday?
Yeah.
We worked on it, definitely.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I know that was the success. We had some other great events this week. Title one event was on Monday night. And last night, some of you were able to attend the multicultural family night. It was both well-attended. I'm gonna let Dr. Hahn just go and talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, so it's nice to be able to recognize and celebrate these family nights that maybe not all of our community members are aware of. So on Monday, we had our title one family night. And we had over twenty parents, excuse me, twenty families show up. And each family was given a summer work bag, or each student was given a fun summer work bag with games. Each student was given a book and then a folder for parents to help implement some of these games. And what was great is every family went in and we had five different stations set up. And students rotated with their families around the room, practicing some of these games and learning how to play them. And it was really what great title one.
practicing some of these games and learning how to play them, and it was really what great Title One night should be, very engaging, very interactive, and everyone leaving with something to do, um, that they can do as a family. So I want to make sure I say thank you to our fantastic Title One staff, our math coaches were there, our DIA, um, our, uh, STEM teachers were there. We just had a great turnout of, of staff that cared deeply about their, about their kids and their students, and thank you to the families that came as well. And then on Wednesday, some of you were there, we had our multicultural alliance family night, which is represented and led by, um, RL, or now ML PAC, and, um, our MECO program, and it was just a fantastic night, games and celebrations and music, um, and just sharing, uh, time and community with one another, and we had, um, community vendors there as well, um, the support of the evening, and I think the highlight for most of the kids was the raffle at the end, uh, where everyone could win prizes. But I know, I brought my family, and I know I just really enjoyed, um, breaking bread and sharing a meal and having laughs, and just a time to share, um, you know, this, this meal with one another, so it was a great night, and, uh, Nancy, you'd said, you know, making sure that we celebrate the positive, and it was such a, those two events were just so worthy of celebration, and recognizing the great work of the staff, uh, who put in their time to make sure it was a great event.
Thank you. Um, next week, we, we've got, you know, more events, middle school move-up, um, days and, and parent evenings. We've got, you know, some concerts, and then we know we've got, uh, graduation, um, coming up, which I'm really excited about, so, um, that, that's also coming down the pike, so just to count, um, really check your, your calendars. I also want to thank Sean Hearn for, um, his dedication and, and time served on school committee member, and also your, uh, presence and your diligence and your dedication, um, with the, with the high school renovation project, because that is a tremendous amount of work, so I really, we do appreciate your commitment to Walpole Public Schools, and I know that commitment will continue, so, um, thank, so thank you for that. Um, and then finally, I know I, I read this every year, but I'm gonna read it again, um, about Memorial Day. This weekend will provide us with an opportunity to get together with family and friends, and as many of us look to this weekend as the unofficial kickoff to the summer, it's also a time to pause and honor our military personnel who made the ultimate sacrifice for our country. I am proud to be part of a military family. My grandfather, Marine Corps Sergeant Major, he fought in World War I, World War II, and Korean War. My uncle, Navy veteran, who fought in Vietnam, and my father was a Navy corpsman. Fortunately, they all made it home after the completion of their service. I continue to visit my grandfather and uncle at Arlington National Cemetery, and my dad at Borne National Cemetery, to pay my respects to those who never made it home. So on Monday, please take the time to salute our fallen and honor our heroes, so thank you.
Questions? Uh, let's move on to old business, middle school.
It's big. It's big, yep. Topping off was last week.
It was wonderful.
So the steel is up, um, you can, uh, from the opposite side, you can kind of get a, a vision already for what it's gonna look like, I think. You know, how, how it's framed by the trees behind and so forth, and how the fields will look in the foreground, so there's a building there now.
And our student council today, um, actually, um, made, um, for, for the workers, a big thank you with signs, and they flipped it over the fence and tied it on, so they all could see it while they're working. I think there's a picture on Instagram. Yeah. Great, so I, I thought that was, you know, really, really nice of them to do that, so thank you.
Uh, high school renovation project. Sean, do you have a final report on the high school renovation?
Yeah. That's what this means, I finished. It was actually a building that went up. Right by On the Way Home. Um, no, so we had a meeting earlier today, um, where we got, um, an update on the proposed schedule and, um, cost estimates, the cost estimates came in as expected in the high range of the, um, the bid range that we were given, uh, which is not great, uh, it's not bad, um, there is a good productive discussion there, um, and the town administrator was very helpful in, you know, casting a positive spin on everything, so.
And, um, they are, Chris, wasn't in Tepe, they're gonna present to the school committee, um, at the June school committee, uh, meeting, and they'll be able to talk about the timeline and those estimates, and, as well as the, um, designs, so that will be, um, June, second, Thursday, June.
Great. Any subcommittee activity other than superintendent? Nope.
Cancelled.
Cancelled, no.
We'll have that coming up.
All right, moving on to warrants.
Yes.
One last time.
Last hurrah.
Yeah. Hopefully you guys can hear through my Foo Fighters voice.
Oh, is that what it is?
Last night at concert, and my voice, uh, is still in New Hampshire, I think, uh, so. Anyway, um, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the following expense warrants for the amounts listed in your packet. Those are two-two-three-zero-four-five and two-two-three-zero-four-six.
Second.
Motion by Sean, second by Mark, all those in favor, opposed, abstained, passes six zero zero.
And I'd also like to make a motion to approve the following payroll warrant for the amount listed in your packet, that is two-three-four-five-P-A.
Second.
Motion by Sean, second by Mark, all those in favor, opposed, abstained, six zero zero. All right, would somebody like to take the gifts and donations?
I'll make a motion to approve the following gifts and donations, to Daniel Feeney Preschool from the John D. Lanley Foundation for Music Therapy, one thousand six hundred and ten dollars, to Boydin School from the Boydin School PAC for the fifth grade luncheon, two hundred and thirty dollars and fourteen cents, to Boydin, Palm Street, and Johnson Middle School from Bay State Textiles Recycling, yeah, one hundred and nine dollars and sixty-five cents, Johnson Middle School, Bird Mill School, Fox Pops for Education, in the amount of thirty-five dollars and seventy cents, Systemwide from Walpole Co-op, is that Cooperative Bank?
Mm-mm.
Chairs for retiring teachers, five thousand six hundred and eighty-eight dollars, and Systemwide from Dedham Savings Bank, Walpole Chairs for Retiring Teachers, nine hundred dollars.
Second.
We got a motion by Carrie, second by Sean, all those in favor, opposed, abstained, six zero zero. Somebody like to take the minutes?
Through you, Madam Chair, make a motion to approve the May eleventh, twenty twenty-three school committee meeting minutes.
Second.
Sorry, motion by Bill, second by Carrie, all those in favor, okay, six zero zero.
Through you, Madam Chair, make a motion to approve the May eleventh, twenty twenty-three school committee executive session meeting minutes, uh, provided that they are held until the matters discussed therein are resolved.
Second.
Motion by Bill, second by Carrie, all those in favor, opposed, abstained, passes six zero zero. And before we adjourn, wanted to say an official thank you from the chair to Sean for all your support and efforts over the last three years. It's been great to have you on the committee, and you will be missed.
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure, um, I have, not that I didn't respect any of you at all before, but I've grown in respect and admiration for the collaboration we have on the committee, uh, for the work, um, and just, you know, delicate care that the administration takes each and every day, um, in creating an atmosphere where our students can succeed. Uh, it's been great, so I'm thankful for the opportunity. Um, Dr. Goff, like you said, you know, I'm not going anywhere. I have some kids to get through the Walpole school system, um, and we'll be around.
So hopefully you'll be back for some recognitions when your, when your girls do wonderful things.
That would be amazing.
Excellent, thank you.
It's been a pleasure working with you, Sean, seriously, it really has.
Appreciate it. I guess I can make a motion to adjourn?
Well, I was just gonna note that Mr. Buckley got credit for the motion to adjourn last time, that'll be the last time that happens.
How did that happen?
Motion to adjourn.
Well, we'll give the motion to Sean in a second to Mark, all those in favor, opposed, six zero zero.
You want to make the?
Thanks very much.